And membership trends and analysis. And what we have, we are going to look at the next steps. All right, so these are the next steps. And so if you see your name behind it, if you are here, let's talk. And starting with Ms. Schultz, the first next step is, say if that was your intent and changes that may or may not need to be made, if it's good.
Okay.
I thought you wanted a breakdown of student transfer.
Right, right.
We wanted to know the breakdown of student transfer by reason.
By region. By region or even by school. Yeah, it wasn't the social, I mean, that's drilling down too far.
But you're saying, Mr. Snee, don't we have that already in the, we do have that in the dashboard, is that correct?
Yes, in the dashboard, by school, it shows you transfers in and out. And by, does it have reason, some, yes?
By reason. You know, if possible, could you, I have to say, I'm not sure I would be able to locate that easily without assistance. So is there a possibility you could give us the step-by-step, maybe if that's just the only thing to, you know, it's there, it's already there is what they're saying, and it's just access, no?
No, I'm sorry, this says, I'm sorry, I need to correct, this says by region, by region. Because I think we have to understand where are they having to transfer out of and to. You know, that, we have the overall of the, and I forget what the figure was, I think it was 19 percent. 19 percent are being, are transferring for special education and then, or 20 percent for special education, then 19 percent for the student transfer regulation. The question is, where are they transferring from and to?
We have it as a P, I think we have it as a PDF. That's what's in the dash, so we could, based on the question, I can, when I respond, I can give the link to the dashboard for that, plus we could provide the PDF. It's pretty, you probably won't want to print it, though, you just want to read through it.
Elizabeth, don't you want by pyramid? I was going to do mine by pyramid.
Or by pyramid, actually. I don't think by reason, the, it's not, it's not by reason. I think that you, couldn't you, I mean, that's 2,000 students, can't you just, isn't there a graph that you can say they're transferring from and to? Or a table just like the ones that you have, in and out by special education?
Yeah, it gets lengthy because of the number of different schools that students will transfer to. But of course, we have that. We can provide that.
I don't understand how it's more than just what we already have. So we have a table for elementary students, transfer in and out migration by elementary, middle, and high school. Why isn't it just that exact same thing for special ed? Yeah, but the student transfer regulation is, no, no.
No.
Okay. Because it's, it was 70 percent total. 30 percent was for AAP, 20 percent was for special education, and 19 percent was by the student transfer regulation.
The other one, 19 was.
Or whatever. Call me a liar for 1 percent. Microphone?
Sorry. I think what you're looking for is within that special education program, of the 4,000 students, this is total, not just elementary, of those 4,000, where are they coming from and where are they going?
Right. But, but aren't they, I mean, aren't there some predominant reasons, like it's the student of an employee, it's the...
That would be under the student transfer reg. So then it's, you want it for both?
You want the breakdown for both of those, student transfers and special education.
I think it's important, because we know, we know what AAP means.
All right, well, we'll get that.
Okay.
All right. Most colleagues, we have a consensus to go forward to that. Okay. Ms. Palchek, yours are the next two.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, I had to step out for a personal issue, and I missed the discussion, so I don't know if...
No, there's no discussion, these are the next steps.
I understand, but I know we were still discussing for number two, if this is what people...
Number one, we're just on number one. So yours is the, what is the amount of CIP funds? That's the one we're at now.
Okay, when I walked out, we wanted to get clarification, and before we present this, I don't know if we made a decision, when I had to step out of what we're going, what we need, and if this is still what colleagues feel will be useful information, I'm happy with it. If there's something missing, or if I missed part of the conversation, I'm happy to adjust it. Does that seem okay?
My take would be that we did cover this, and, but the question is going to be whether or not we're going to wait for Dr. Braybrand to meet with the county executive, or whether we're going to actually have an amendment that says, or a follow-on motion, Mr. Moon?
I'll be working on a motion. I'm working on a motion.
Follow-on or...
Whether it's a follow-on or it's an amendment, it's a motion, that I'm waiting to get something from staff.
So you don't need this information? You're good for that motion? Or do we still need this information, is my question? I'm happy to take it off if we feel clear, keep it on if we're not...
I believe the staff is looking into all that information to grab something for me to consider. And as soon as I get it, I'll work with Ms. Evans, and then share with the board.
Okay, so let's just leave it to make sure it happens. Okay. Yep, that one looks good to me. And not just local, I assume this is other comparable ones nationally?
By the way, we do this, and I just wanted to say this to staff, because sometimes, staff, if there are concerns, I want you to tell this board, we're going to be transparent, sometimes you need to push, sometimes I need to push. If there's something on here that's, uh-oh, or, yes, but it's not going to be ready on Thursday, we need to say so, and feel comfortable to say so in a professional and respectful manner.
This is absolutely not urgent, so if anything you have or are able to collect. Okay.
Now, the issue about the boundary change is, I think that would be, that would warrant a separate work session, where we do the research, you guys have the information, and I'm happy to do as much as I can before Thursday, I think that...
No, 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 no.
I was just saying that as an example, now, that's, that wouldn't be for Thursday. I assume you would want us to do that and then present it at a future work session, as the spirit, or in a Braybrand briefing, you can decide.
I know you have a very limited staff, there is absolutely not urgent, just for us to be able to compare our practices and have a discussion at a future, future date, so this is...
I rarely do things like channel Kathy Smith. But I'm going to channel Kathy Smith for a second. What does this mean in terms of staff work? Like, I, I'm trying to figure out what's the best, I just want to understand what you're asking for.
I understand what you're asking for, so it's not to add work, it's whether it's best practices or benchmarks. I know that Jessica's a very experienced planner, and has seen things happen in other ways in other jurisdictions. I would just like to be able to see, just because we've been doing this for a long time, is this the best way to move forward? So I'm flexible as to what will help us have a conversation around.
Right, and Ms. Palchek, when you, when you left, I was talking about, you know, boundaries and how difficult they are, and do we need, I mean, there are some school systems that re-boundary every five years, there are some schools, some people that do what we do. What we do lately has not been serving, serving us well.
It's very reactive.
And we, you know, that, those were my comments that you missed. They were like, we have to be brave as a board, and we have to be forward-thinking and brave. And so I would appreciate this to get some data, what other school systems do, not just surrounding areas, but similar-sized systems, and how they work.
Because I've had constituents move here and wonder why we do it this way, so.
Okay, Megan?
Okay. Just for clarity on that one, I would recommend against the surrounding jurisdictions, you know, our WABE schools, and the reason I say that is because our family lived in Wake County, Raleigh, North Carolina, where they were doing substantial boundary changes on almost an annual basis, and it had a very negative effect on people feeling that they would even enroll their kids in the public schools. They just, people got so fatigued and anxious about it. So I think if we want to see how the other area jurisdictions are doing it, that would be a start, because we have to be mindful that if we do something that's too dramatic, and the other area jurisdictions are doing it differently, people have choices. So I just think we could start there, and then if we don't like what we see on how it's done, we could go broader.
I appreciate what you're saying. I will do an and, the way we look at calendar and other things we look at, I would like regional and national benchmarks, so I would, I prefer to keep it as both. That's okay, thank you.
We're voting on the language. Okay, agreement on that? Four, five, six, seven, okay, we're good. Ms. Corbett Sanders, ensure...
I have the next one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped one. Ms. Palchek has, provide information by pyramid for those schools without AAP centers on Figure Five?
Yes, I know you have that data, I opened it up in the dashboard, but just so when we're looking at transfer in and out, some pyramids keep their kids in their pyramid for the center, some are leaving, so anyway, that's easy to show why there was such a large effect from the...
Figure Five.
On the, was that attachment A or B? The analysis and trends? Was it, oh, Table Five, not Figure Five, I believe it's Table, on page, either, on page 11? I didn't give the number, but, Migration, Table Six, I believe that's the one. Can we just take out Table Five? Because if you're creating a new table, or if you're adding to it...
I think it's Table Seven.
Or Seven.
Page 13.
Yes. I don't know if it's easy to add to that table, or if you have a better suggestion, I don't want to limit.
We can add a, we can denote which schools, which of the pyramids have AAP, we can add another column.
Okay, perfect.
The only thing I would say is, is that it's weird that you asked that, because I was making the point to Dr. Lockard, that for example, the middle school, that the way you have the membership by pyramid and the change, the middle school transfer migration shows like a massive egress from Centerville, but a huge influx to Chantilly. That's all the kids leaving Liberty and being moved to Rocky Run. And so it sort of, you have to know, it's like, there's a, there's an intuitive factor there, I don't know if what Ms. Palchek is asking for would help, I don't know.
Right, so at this point, we're looking at elementary, there are middle schools as well, right? So that's why I don't necessarily need it, I don't know if that table can kind of explain where those numbers seem large, because students are migrating for a center, whereas other schools, like Frost and Woodson, have it right there. So I don't, I don't want to, I mean, I'm happy to chat about it, make it specific, I don't want to micromanage it, so.
Let us take a look at it, and we'll try to figure out the spirit of that.
Good.
Getting more data on why people are transferring kind of goes with my second bullet, where I ask for the demographic data of in-and-out migration. So maybe what we should be considering doing is kind of bundling, bundling yours and mine, and the first one of Elizabeth's together to be one, so that we are not having multiple work items. And I would be amenable if somebody wants to do that. And so then, if I can move to my first bullet, are you done? I'm sorry.
We don't have to vote on that.
Well, let's not vote on that, because I think Karen has a good idea, she knew what hers was, we weren't, none of us were reading ahead.
And I'm amenable to that, so.
That's, that's all-encompassing, I think it could provide Elizabeth with her data as well as Dahlia with hers. So when we get to that one, do your first one first, and then we'll, we'll change whatever language you need for the second one.
Great, that would be fantastic, thank you. So let's look at the ed spec. I actually had initially said, ensure that the Equity Work Plan ensures that our ed spec, which links our building plans to our programming, is applied equitably across the county. But I think we need to, a first step to that is actually letting this board understand how the ed spec has changed as a result of the actions that were taken eight months ago. Because I think most of us were not aware that there was an approval of the ed spec eight months ago. So I would just, share the ed spec.
Yeah, I think you could combine that with the one that I think is probably lower down, that I had suggested, getting it, hopefully it's further down to get a work session.
Karen first.
Maybe that didn't get, maybe that didn't get captured, I think, I think we need a work session on it, you know.
How about if we just follow up with the different letter that shows the differences, and then individual questions and concerns? If you, that would just be my recommendation, because I think it really wouldn't warrant the full, anyway, full work session.
I would start by sharing the ed spec, and then if we have multiple questions, then we can always put it on a work session.
Put it on a work session with you and Janie, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
The only, the only point to clear, I don't necessarily want to put my, the whole ed spec up on board docs for everybody else to take our work, which is what will happen. And it's our work.
Problem is, though, Kevin, if we shared in a work session, everybody else would be able to see it too, so.
Not the whole, not the whole, I mean, the whole ed spec is, looks like a phone book.
We're talking about discrepancies of the areas, what was taken out, what was...
I do have a report that I, that clarifies all the changes.
Yeah, maybe that's, I think that's all the board's really looking for.
Okay, I was, I mean, I'm happy to share with you.
No, we're not asking you to share your intellectual property to the world, we're just asking to, at least this board, understand what's happening.
It's your guy, it's your guy's intellectual property, I'm just trying to protect it.
Okay, so...
Well, then that should be worded differently, because it's not sharing the ed specs then, it's...
It's sharing, sharing...
Sharing the, the report on comparisons.
A report on changes.
The ed specs with the board.
And then making sure that it's built into the work that Dr. Duran is doing on equity.
Karen, how, what does that look like? I'm not sure the second part of that.
What, it's really making sure that our facilities are capable of supporting the range of programs that we want to be available at each, for each of our students across the county. Because what happens today is, there may be a need for outdoor learning spaces, and not all of our schools have outdoor learning spaces. There's, you know, so there's a whole series that I would just like somebody to say, yeah, when we look at our schools, and we look at what we are providing as opportunities for our students, that there's equity in the provision of those opportunities based on our facilities.
So you might want to look at this and see how you want to edit it to say that.
We could just say, ensure that the Equity Work Plan addresses changes in our ed spec to ensure that there's equity and opportunities across the county.
Head nods, hands? Head nod, hands?
And so the next one, if we can just combine Ms. Palchek's, Ms. Schultz's, and mine together into one bullet of providing data on the in-and-out migration of students by reason and by pyramid.
So just to clarify, in-and-out migration is not the same as transfer, so you want to include, in-and-out migration refers to students who...
No, transfer.
Transfers.
Okay, I just want to clarify. Thank you.
Okay. So I would be amenable for all three of us to work together on, or to combine those three, if people are comfortable with it. And then my next one on the proffers, I believe yet another opportunity to combine work efforts between Ms. Evans and myself, and probably Ms. Palchek, although she had stepped away from the table, but I know, having worked on the Schools Committee of the Planning Commission, the proffer law, there's a lot of mystery and misinformation about the impact of the proffer law on our ability to, to fund our schools. And so I think it would be helpful if we could not only have a debrief on the impact of the proffer law, but then have recommendations made from the staff on how, how we should change it, and make proposals to the county.
Right, and my next step was about a proposal which, let's see, draft...
Yeah, so if we combine those two...
So is that a Braybrand briefing, or you want a work session where we would present that and our proposal? Huh?
It would be legally advised either way.
Right.
So we'll do a work session?
Right.
No?
It has to be legal advice.
Legal advice, okay. So how would we communicate that information? How are we going to do that?
We can always have a closed session.
Okay, all right.
Well, now, but keep in mind, the second part of that is public information, because we want something for the planning, to send to the Planning Commission, maybe we should...
Two-step process.
Maybe we should, I mean, we can combine it or separate it, it doesn't matter, but one is, is in the purview of legal, and the other's in the purview of facilities.
Right, or policy.
Can we say, provide legal debrief on change in proffer law, and, and then have draft specific requests for proffers for school board, for, yeah, for school board review?
Yeah, that works.
That's good.
And then, more than just briefing on the impact of the growing need for investment in major maintenance over the next several years, I would actually like to have a ongoing attachment to the CIP that provides more detail on the, the major maintenance demands, so that we can build that into our budget requirements going forward.
So for Karen, Corbett Sanders, and Ms. Evans, one right above that, unless I hear any, anything against, everybody's okay with that?
Now Jeff, I mean, this, you heard what I said to staff, is that okay? Is that doable? That's not going to take...
No. What I was going to do is, I was going to go ahead and wait to the end, and really just state which of these you need for Thursday's decisions, and then we would go ahead, and for the ones that aren't a requirement before the next two days.
Yep, most of these aren't just for Thursday, this, this is longer-term.
Yes, sir.
Correct.
I just want to clarify my work task.
Actually, we want it this afternoon, please.
All right, and the second one, briefing on the impact of the growing needs, investment in major maintenance, any, everybody's okay with that as well?
We probably should take a show of hands.
Show of hands? Okay, good. Next one, Mr. Moon.
Again, I'll be working with the staff to come up with an amendment and share with the board. I don't know what information, especially, you know, considering the input from East Team's group with a member representing Braddock District about what the maximum amount of capital funding a county can come up with, based upon their debt service ratio. If, you know, staff, hopefully, you know, before the close of business tomorrow, can get that information, and give me something to consider.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that?
Sure.
Sorry, no, I wasn't here. So if we make it specifically for trailers and modules, does that mean that in the future that funding could not be used for something other than trailers and modules?
Oh, no, 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 it's going to be both for, you know, he's speeding up our queue on CIP, and also address the trailer issues.
Right, help eliminate.
You know, based upon my brief conversation with the Chief Operating Officer about half an hour ago, it may be, could be, because I don't expect staff to be able to redo entire CIP, the book itself, it could come as an addendum to it.
Right, no, I just wanted to be clear, because I know we'd like to not fall behind on maintenance and renovations as well, so.
You know, obviously, this is going to come to the board, you know, for the board consideration, and before that, it will be shared with the board members. If you want to suggest, you know, some other language changes, you can certainly propose that before or at the meeting.
And I just wanted to speak to your comment.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, what you said, I almost see it as real data and anecdotal data, because what we've been told in the past, this cannot happen because our AAA bond rating will no longer, but, but where is the data behind that? At what level will that, you know, I think...
I mean, at least we can use what the county had in the past provided to us on both debt service and AAA bond rating. I mean, that's a, you know, you could say that, that's a, that's an old data, but if that's the only data we have...
That's the only data.
But that data is even better than 155 we have right now, even with using that old data.
All right, and Mr. Plattenberg, I can assure you, that is needed before Thursday.
There is, yeah, there is trend data in the county CIP.
Okay, and there's two, Karen was first, and then you on this point.
This is actually a two-part, because what we also want is, we want to have the capacity data, no, the capacity data for our schools, once you take out modulators as being part of the permanent facility. Because, you know, as I introduced my remarks earlier, modulators have two different forms in this county, some are bricks and mortar, but the overwhelming majority are supersized trailers that can be...
Huh? Yeah, actually, we do have two.
But this, this is a separate, this is a separate next step to, to get that, and I don't, is that...
Because that's, he talks...
Has that been captured somewhere? I mean, that's a different next step to...
Megan, put your, put your mic on if you're going to talk.
No, we're, we're over-complicating Mr. Moon's bullet. He specifically was just saying, right now, we're capped at 155 annually, and that, it's from 12, 13 years ago. We just want to know, based on the point you made, what's the county's debt service limit? What's the debt service, you used the word, to, the required...
The debt capacity?
No, there's a, there's a debt service.
Debt service.
And then, yeah, debt, right. There's a, there's a debt capacity, and then debt service, you're paying on the debt.
Yes, the debt, yeah.
Those two numbers, we just need those two numbers.
There's, we'll research the details, there's actually two portions with the, within the 10 principles of sound management that the county follows to ensure the AAA bond rating, so we'll get those numbers. But as I mentioned earlier, now I believe there is flexibility in those two numbers, now it's more how much debt service within their operating dollars do they have to put into their budget in order to make those payments, once you borrow on the bonds.
Yeah, you're right, debt capacity and debt service requirement.
Okay, Ms. Kies-Gamari, you have a comment?
Well, I understand we want to clarify what Ms. McLaughlin is talking about, but I'm also trying to get to the real number of what we really need to be able to hit that five-year, be able to do what we need to do to remodel our buildings and all of that sort of thing, if I'm saying that correctly. We were talking about getting the real numbers instead of being stuck with the, right, the 274, right, that's, that's what I'm trying to make sure, right. So I wanted to make sure that was clarified.
That's, my question is still Bullet Number Two, correct, right? So we'll get that?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think, Mr., you have a question?
And I think, Mr., you have a question, Elizabeth?
So I guess I'm wondering if this is involved, so I'm trying to figure out between the answer to Ms. Palczek's question and the potential, I think this is a smaller request by Mr. Moon than what I was asking, which is, are we able to, or are we interested in directing Dr. Braybrand to work with the county executive to seek a more proportional distribution of the total CIP dollars from the county? And if I need to put that in as a follow-on motion, I will, or is that going, or would that be considered an amendment?
Mr. Moon?
You know, from my perspective, this is, you know, not too complicated. I mean, upcoming, I mean, I'm looking forward to all the discussion we need to have with the county supervisors, but if we look at the AAA, you know, what the maximum we can get with the AAA bond rating in mind, and also debt service requirement, I think that's additional requirement, and see what's the maximum we can have. And we said that we need up to $270 million, and I want to be able to put, I want to be able to persuade my board to be able to put a reasonable amount of additional capital funding within the limit, within the limit, however they come up with their money. Hey, if they want to give their capital fund, out of their capital fund, to fund us, that's one way to do it. If they want to just pay more into the debt service to do it, that's another way to do it. If they want to ignore their AAA bond rating requirement, that's up to them, give us some more, that's fine too. So, but we want to present something to the board of supervisors that we really mean business on this, this time.
All right.
Good, sorry, can I ask a quick question on that? Just because I don't know, when do they have to set the amount for the next bond, school bond? What is their timeframe?
I think they do at the same time they adopt the budget.
But it's every two years, so what, at what point?
Every year, every year, they adopt the budget.
Quinn might know.
Bond referendum, which is our authority to sell general obligation bonds, that's every two years, and that's the language we use in our CIP's cash flow, that says these projects are funded versus unfunded, right? Unfunded means we haven't gone to the voters to have a bond referendum. And once we go to the bond referendum, we have approval for, let's say, $300 million. Then county sets how much we're going to issue each year. That's our cash flow, that's the $155 million. That is set every year, and sometimes they'll sell twice in a given year to make up the $155 million, depending on market conditions. If they decide it's better to go sell it in the fall, because we get better interest rates, they'll do it in the fall. Typically, they've been doing it in the spring, and that's when they decide to sell enough to provide the $155 million cash flow for the school system for the current year.
So there's no effect, because it's not till 2019, it's still a yearly process? Okay, thank you. All right, so, Mr. Moon knows what he wants, he is, and the staff knows what we want, and we're good.
Okay, thank you.
We're good with that one, and that one is by-
Thank you for being patient with me today.
Consider postponing votes, I think we've talked about that, and I think there's agreement on that.
Yeah, we'll see, Dr. Braybrand's going to talk with the county to see if we can do that, if at all, I mean, we'll get back with you, and if at all possible, then it would mean on February 8th, we would do both the CIP and the budget, but, you know, bring your pillow, and we'll just, whatever the board wants, if we feel that that, you know, is the way to go. We have to find out from the county if we can push that off, so, we'll see.
All right, so that one's good. Mr. Moon, next one is yours again.
Yes, you know, they're going to get back to us just to ask about the status, because I have never received that information.
Okay.
Maybe they do not want to share all that information with us.
It's the trailers. Yes, they're willing to give that to us. I believe that's what Mr. Plattenberg nodded, right? McLaughlin?
I think this was captured in Ms. Palczek's request, correct? We just want to know what their debt service, or their debt capacity and their debt service requirement is, correct? I don't think it needs to be listed twice.
And that was which one with Ms. Palczek, number two?
Was there?
Well.
Oh, all right, then, yes, keep mine, please.
Yeah, I didn't-
I mean, I think it's understood, but let's just make sure everybody knows that's what, because that's what's going to lead a lot to Mr. Moon's question, so that's fine.
And yours was very specific, what's that one on?
Oh, number, the second one, provide clarification on number of 26 students, it should say high school students. To alternative programs in Figure 10. So basically, what this was is when we were asking what our transportation is of students, yes, for our transfers, it was only showing 26 kids, but anyone going to the alternative school is being transported, and therefore, it's a transfer. It's not, no one, they can voluntarily ask to go there, but that's nobody's base school, so it costs, yeah. So being able to just know what we're doing in terms of-
Okay, they got it.
Have we captured the issue about taking the modulators out of capacity? Is that, where is that? Where is that? At the very beginning?
Request, how many?
Could you go up to the top again? Where is it captured? I don't think we captured it either, so we need to capture that. You know, show school capacity with modular capacity removed.
Yes, okay.
So we need to add that as a next, I mean, we all agreed to that, but it's just not up there.
Okay. And Elizabeth?
So I have a clarification from staff, because the priority recommendation, or priority recommended boundary adjustments on page 46 do not include Dr. Braybrand, what I expected, which was a way to try to figure out my Centerville, Fairfax, Chantilly, Lake Braddock-Robinson issue. Is that a next step? Is that something I follow up with you afterwards? What happens? Because, you know, I appreciate that we have, you know, Ms. Evans pointed out, there's, you know, you have one region that's missing, you know, 700 seats and whatever, but these schools border two regions, and so there's a cross point here of a problem that I've got that is the intersection of five different pyramids.
So, Dr. Braybrand, in the past, these are the last three from three or four years ago, this board, at this, when these were created, the board member directed the superintendent for us to, or requested that we would conduct a boundary study in a particular area.
I mean, usually, your board members are fighting you on boundary studies, and you're having to push us to say, no, seriously, you need to do a boundary study, but I can't ignore the fact that I have, you know, some of my schools are, have a steady capacity, others have hundreds of seats open in the out-years, and I'm missing 1,100 seats between two.
So you're, is that up there already? You're asking for a boundary study?
It's buried in H or something?
Yeah, I mean, if we're just going down the same list, what is it you want put up there, and then let's look at it, and we'll, you're asking for a boundary study on a select group of schools? Yes?
And it's not a full-out boundary study, but there's got to be a balancing look at the elementary's feeding into the Centerville, Fairfax, Chantilly, Lake Braddock-Robinson of how do you, do we have to move an elementary school potentially to, you know, keep Lake Braddock's numbers up in the out-years? What do I do? I mean, the only answer is put more modulators, I mean, we're trying to solve the very problem, you know, by then saying, well, let's just put more modulators at Centerville and Chantilly in the out-years.
Okay.
We can't, we have to get ahead of this, we have to be proactive at some point, and I've got a resource stewardship issue where we address, you know, resource stewardship in our CIP, and we have a facility sitting empty that is in the midst of all of this.
Okay.
They got it. All right, thank you all, we are a little behind, but-
One more thing?
I actually, I mentioned it to Mr. Plattenberg during the break, just, I would recommend for improving the document that in the table of contents, they need to cite page 42, which is where the renovation queue is. For a vast majority of the public, when they look at our CIP, they're looking for the renovation queue, and we don't have that there, so I would just recommend it get added to the table of contents, and they seem fine with it.
Okay. And Mr. Plattenberg wanted for clarity, what is due, and Mr. Moon, I think only your two, so if you can help us, is it just, it's- Wait, what, Mr. Plattenberg wanted clarity on what is due on Thursday night? Dahlia, we're looking at this, and Ryan, we're looking at this and seeing what, if any of these, Mr. Plattenberg wants clarity on what is needed to be done by Thursday night.
Wouldn't number one inform Mr. Moon's amendment?
Right. So number one-
I think there are several that's going to inform Mr. Moon's amendment or request. I think we could filter through this, so anything related to-
I just wanted to make certain you're okay. So now, once we had this discussion, I wanted to make-
And then only other one on here was the, yes, the updating the school capacity without the modulators.
And with regard to Ms. Schultz and the other comments, those would be incorporated in the CIP document as basically page 46.
And then I think on that third, I think we took out social, emotional, it's for whatever reasons.
So Elizabeth, you're asking for the CIP to be changed this year?
Yeah.
To include a boundary-
It's what I've been, it's what I've been talking to them about all along. I've got 1,100 seats missing in two of my high schools. I have to do something now. If we don't start, we'll never get there, we'll never be proactive, we'll only be reacting.
Right, and as staff, we took it to look at the elementary, look at that whole catchment area, if you will, if you talk about it from that standpoint. Granted, if it's a change, and Susan mentioned this, if it's changed the CIP in that regard, I don't know where it becomes an amendment or where it becomes a recommended next step, because either way, what's happened in the past is when the board, when the superintendent's been directed to look into this and look at that, then we as staff go ahead and provide that information as a part of our follow-ups on the next CIP.
Right, so that, it sounds to me like if it's actually changing the substance of the CIP, it probably is a motion?
It's a motion.
Wouldn't it typically be a motion?
Yes, with an amendment.
It's never been a motion before, though.
Jeff, we're not going to be able to do a boundary study between now and Thursday that informs the CIP, right? You're asking for a boundary study to be done as one of the next steps, so that in the future, that-
The codification is just so it gets documented that that is a request of this body, that we go ahead and look at that whole region and come back. It's, you're right, it's not that we immediately are requesting that a boundary study, we're requesting that we look at all of those issues.
How long have the things on page 46 been sitting there?
Oh, varies, a few years.
A few years, that, yes. I'm asking that this be added, I'm not saying that it's, everything's going to necessarily happen, but if we don't get it on here, that it's a problem, we will be talking about this next year in terms of adding it. We have to get it onto the list to figure out what is it that we're going to do? Are we, at the same time, we're looking at ways to get rid of modulators, the only answer to the, you know, segment that's going in in that end of the county is to put a bunch more modulators in, if we don't address starting to look at this.
So I understand your advocacy, but my point is, rather than, I mean, that's, we're elevating this to one of four that are priorities, right? You want us to elevate this to one of four, so I'm just saying, it's a significant change, and I don't know that, that just kind of nodding heads here-
I'm just wondering if-
The work session is a way to do that.
If we can kind of try to get it resolved on that same page, page 46, these priority boundary adjustments, these are boundary changes that the board has adopted prior, because those were on the CIPs that we're going forward with, with some of the dates to be determined. I'm wondering on the bottom half of this, there should be a category called boundaries to be studied, right? Whether or not, and then we could put in Ms. Schultz's request in a separate box, so it doesn't elevate to these boundary adjustments that the board all had already approved on to pursue, and it's really starting that process of-
Things to be evaluated or considered, I'm fine with that, but we have to, we cross two different regions and have a multiplicity of feeder issues at that end of the county that there will, I mean, the new high school will not, is way out of the epicenter of this. So how else are we going to identify that this is a problem and that we're going to, I mean, I think we owe it to the public.
And I'm fine with having a category that says, board members want us to take a look at this one, you know?
That, yeah, this needs to be evaluated.
And then any of us could actually, actually, any of us then could say, please look at this, right? I think that's a good solution.
We can do that.
All right, but that doesn't elevate anything or change anything, because, you know, part of what I talked about at the end of my comments and what you talked about, there's a real prioritization there, and what do we need to do and how do we do that? And that's a, like I said, that's a conversation that's going to require a lot of guts, so, but I appreciate your comments, Elizabeth, I understand where you're coming from, and Megan, you had, did you have anything to add?
Are you saying that we can't do any, any boundary evaluations unless we evaluate all of them?
No, absolutely not.
Okay.
But I just think what we just talked about makes sense, and then anybody who wants that to be considered, you could throw it on there, and you see this as a priority for your area, so you're putting it on there without the board saying, okay, this is one of our top four priorities. Maybe it will be, maybe it will be, but at this point, whatever, Ms. Quinn, just, you had a good way of putting a headline on it.
It could just be board member requests for future studies.
I guess I'm still confused, how is it that we prompt staff to look at and abate some of our biggest issues in terms of missing seats in the out-years? Because the problem with the CIP, that we have hitherto, because we haven't necessarily had good data, we haven't had good money from the board supervisors, we haven't done things until we're in absolute crisis mode and we're reacting. And when are we going to get to being proactive and seeing on the horizon, we have a very burgeoning issue? And Ms. Corbett Sanders, I'm looking at you, because you have one of the two other, what I call giant red flags with West Potomac, you're down like 600 seats or 700 seats. So there are some very glaring, on the immediate horizon, very serious issues that if we don't begin the work of looking at them now, if we don't direct staff to start looking at them now, by the time we're on the crisis, we're going to be in the thick of it, and then what? I feel like there's like this codifying of it in some way, that, well, you can put it on the list, but it doesn't mean we're going to do anything about it.
No, it just, it just means it doesn't take us a priority like these.
Okay.
It's in a queue of potential things that will get prioritized at a later date.
And I'm a little confused.
Wait, Ms. McLaughlin's next.
Now, I'm trying to just make this a little simpler, during the break, I was asking Mr. Plattenberg about these three that are listed here, because I don't remember our board voting to say, yep, we're going to say, you know, these schools and these areas are now looking at, as a priority- are now looking at, as a priority for boundary adjustment. As I understood it, individual board members identified areas of concern in their districts. It was then discussed at work sessions, saying, I think we need to make this a priority to be looking into these areas. And staff has listed them here, because they, staff has reviewed them and said, yep, you're going to need to do something here. The solution I've heard, which is very good from Tammy and Sandy to Ms. Schultz, is create a second chart, and that is going to be where any one of us, the nine magistrate board members, as well as the at-larges, if you guys have heard something that we didn't know about, you can just say, this is an area of concern, and it will be part of the CIP, it'll be a chart right underneath it. It's not directing staff that we're going to go ahead and change this boundary, but it's saying, we're going to look into this area and report back to the board. That's how I understood it. So Elizabeth, it does make it actionable, in the sense that we're putting it on here and asking staff to review this and come back to say whether this now needs to become a priority boundary adjustment.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
So I'm a little confused. I'm a little confused, because we have these options, A through H, which include potential boundary adjustments for schools, and so are we planning on listing all of the H allocated schools on another page, or, because-
It's only if you want it. Do you want them to look at a boundary? You may not want them to do any boundaries in those areas right now. She's a board member identifying that it needs to be looked at.
No, and I have, I understand.
Like, for example, in the discussions that you've been having in your region, as your region continues to grow, with a lot of the different changes, I know we mentioned Ann Bark, we've had briefings like this, and we've talked about, well, the future development in that region is going to require us to look at a broader look-
Right.
-in those conversations. It's at the time that that starts to unfold, through the CIP, through the actual enrollment, and you start to see more actual, that's the beauty of this annual look at a five-year plan, that when you start seeing that reaching at a pivot point, well, that tipping point is where you then say, I want this added to the list, because this now is showing what we've been anticipating through the Hs and the As and all those other tables.
So if you think that there's something that you know exists as a sub to H that you want to elevate, like, I know that we're having a problem with modulators and trailers and CIP monies, there's enough of a problem between two of my regions and two of my high schools, that I don't want the answer to be in a year, well, we're just going to have to put in a bunch of modulators at Chantilly and Centerville. I mean, no, I want to head that off. So if there's something that you feel like that's an H that you're going to try to head off, I would suggest putting it on the list.
So I guess my question is, does it preclude, if I don't put it on the list right today, if in a month, things have changed, enough approvals have gone through the Planning Commission for X amount of more buildings, and buildings start turning dirt, or builders start turning dirt to construct things, then I may come to Dr. Braybrand and say, hey, things are escalating or accelerating as a result of lots of money coming into the economy, and you may need to take a look at this. So that's why I'm not inclined, I mean, I fully support if you want to add something in the CIP, a new section, saying these are priority, future boundaries, priorities for looking at boundaries, we can do that, but it's not clear that you can't do that by just sending a note to Dr. Braybrand and Mr. Plattenberg and saying, you know, things are changing, and we need you to take a look, please.
Right, I think the only difference here is, because it's a public document, it's a nod, it's communicating to the public that board members are identifying, that community has brought up concerns, board members are now identifying and passing it to staff as a heads up.
So let's go, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to take that, I think all of you really are on the same page here more than you think, and we're willing to, we're willing to do it, so if you all are on the same page, I think you are, and we're willing to do it, I think we've, I think we've got this one. You all want to be able to be proactive of things that you see coming up, just because it's not on there doesn't mean we want to deal with it, but because it's a public document, I think it helps communicate out to a broader range of folks, this is something we're needing to watch, and action needs to be taken in some form or fashion.
All right, so then we need to go to the last, we need to go to the last step, and we-
Let me just ask, what happened to my first? Did the, did my first get rolled into the very first one about the, did it get captured completely in that third one?
It was the one where we combined Dahlia's, Karen's, and Elizabeth's. Okay, so let's go to the last bullet, and we need to take that off, and what we need to do is add something like, Sandy and I were wordsmithing, add category to the CIP showing member identified areas to consider for boundary study changes. Board members, what did I say, sorry.
That's okay.
Yes. Add category to CIP showing school board member identified, nope, other line, sorry. For future boundary change, we put future and then put page 46, yeah, just put future in there, I mean, I think that's understood, but, page 46. All right, so I think we've agreed to that, Ms. Palczek, did you have one last comment? I know you had a hand, you had your-
I don't know if it's still relevant, but I think I'm okay with that now, I just wanted to clarify, I guess what I heard Megan saying is that the three things currently on page 46 are board members bringing them up, my understanding is, at least the two, and my boundary or staff have been looking at this, it's been a process, and it's something we're looking at. So I just wanted to clarify, if we're adding something that's specifically brought forward by board members, that we are still clear that there's a process, and that staff is also looking, and eventually it gets to a priority list together, so I just was a little unclear on that.
That's fine.
I wanted to clarify that, but I think we're on the same page.
Yeah, this started with your predecessor, that's, and then, and then staff went from there. So now, what we're doing is, we're creating a known process, because I've been on the board six years, and I didn't know how these three got here, and then it wasn't until the break that I asked staff, how did these three even reach this chart? And they explained that individual board members identified areas of concern, and then they looked into them. And then we brought it and discussed it at a work session, and they said, okay, we think we're going to have to look at these areas.
So until now, it's, these have only been brought forward by board members, there have never been ones you've identified?
No, no, they're the ones that staff have identified.
Those three, but not this table in general.
There's also been direction to school superintendents of the past.
All right, that was a little confusing to me, I don't think this-
I was only referencing the three existing.
All right, yeah, the table's been in there, the process, I think, is known, but this kind of puts it within the public document and helps, thank you, Ms. Quinn, for helping us through this, and I believe we are, as I said, behind, and, but we are done with the CIP and the membership.
Where are we on the fact that we got an advocacy letter that came to the clerk of the board, that came to our board just yesterday on the 21st, from the Sierra Club of Great Falls and five other organizations about solar energy? Is that what Ms. Heinz, because her language is quite high level, so I want to make sure-
And Mr. Plattenberg referenced earlier that he was going to be working with her as-
No, I understood that too, but I didn't hear specific reference to this advocacy group.
No.
So, and they'll at least be able to know that they were hurt, because they were saying, we want you guys to do this.
And I've been asked to provide a response correspondence, she is a friend of mine, and very active in that group, and contacts me on a regular basis, but I've been asked to go ahead and send her a reply, and I plan to put something in.
All right, this work session is complete, thank you all. Five-minute break.